Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Carrangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Ms. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong. Mrs. Reese. Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum, please rise as the votes play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. We're going to start with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Lacks, and good evening, everyone. Last night, the East Brunswick Music Department kicked off its winter concert series with a high school orchestra performance under the direction of Dr. Arvin Gopal. Two-hundred-and-fifteen high school student musicians took the stage and gave a wonderful performance. A calendar of all winter concert performances for the district can be found at ebnet.org/inthearts or on the district website. Churchill Junior High School hosted the first Sources of Strength Meeting on November 28th. They discussed positive friends and how sources of strength is important. After the lesson, students created wristbands or brag tags with positive messages to distribute to peers. On Tuesday evening, Churchill Junior High School recognized two-hundred-and-seventy student athletes who participated in fall athletic programs. We are proud to have such a large turnout to recognize our student athletes who demonstrated excellence in athletics while balancing their academics. This was the first time that seventh-grade students participated on our middle school teams, and we are excited as they help to strengthen our athletic programs. Senior Catherine McSweeney was named to First Team All-State for gymnastics. Catherine was the individual Central Jersey Sectional Champion, as well as the individual bars and floors champion. She finished sixth overall in the state. And Senior Ariana McSweeney was named to the Third Team All-State as well in gymnastics, so congratulations to them. Join the East Brunswick Education Foundation on Saturday, December 3rd, as they host an event at Barnes &amp; Noble right across the street at the East Brunswick Square Mall. There are many fun activities and events scheduled throughout the day, and if you are unable to attend the event, you can shop online at bn.com, at bnlikeinbarnsnoble/bookfairs from December 3rd to December 9th to support EVEF. The district is currently -- no, I'm sorry, this actually is a public notice, too, and I informed the Board earlier, so I want to preface that. The district is currently planning for a new high school on the existing high school site. Part of that planning has required, among other things, an environmental evaluation of the entire site. An environmental evaluation revealed that the northeast portion of the school property, an area with low-lined vegetation and grass-covered pathways, used only intermittently as a cross-country course, was historically used for agricultural purposes. To evaluate the potential for historically-applied pesticide contamination associated with the agricultural operations, soil sampling was conducted. The sampling results identified arsenic concentrations above the soil that were also -- within the soil, I'm sorry, that were above the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Soil Remediation Standards. This is a common occurrence on parcels that were historically farmed as legally-applied arsenic-containing pesticides were previously used throughout New Jersey. I want to emphasize that contamination does not extend to any other portions of the high school property. As a result, the specified area, the area that you see outlined in yellow, is off-limits to all students, staff, and any other person. The area will be posted with a notice to that effect. Additionally, a licensed site remediation professional will develop a plan for submission to and approval by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, which may require other remedial measures to be taken. And then tomorrow, by separate blackboard, we'll also communicate the same message to the high school staff and families so that we have appropriate notice.
Thank you. Okay.
Are there any questions available for the superintendent's report tonight on that specific issue?
Sure.
It's up to the president.
I'm fine with it. Are you allowed to do that?
Just a question on that, and I appreciate the environmental work being done on that, but that -- what are we doing or what do we know about the physical impact of the students that have been exposed to this area over the last X number of years now that we do know that the arsenic levels are above state? And I would imagine being above that level would tend to make one believe that it could, in fact, have some detrimental effect on human beings or livestock or what have you. Talk to me about what we're doing to understand better the health impacts of our students who have been using that as a cross-country course.
So the -- and I'll have Mr. Giuliani weigh in as well, but information from the scientists who evaluated the samples from the site indicated to us that the only adverse impact would be if one were to actually consume the dirt. That is the impact. So running through the course, being in the course, should not have any impacts, any adverse impact on anyone. But this is purely precautionary because the levels required by the environmental protection are of a level that, you know, we just have, we can't allow anybody else in there. We never had an indication from any scientist, from anybody looking at any of our samples, that indicated we had any health risk to any prior occupant or anybody who currently would have been in it this year. There was nothing that we were given, and that's the information. I'm sharing the information that we were given.
I think this needs more discussion around it, so I think I'll make it as a motion later in the presentation. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions on this? Okay, Ms. Megan, you want to tell us what's going on in your high school and your life?
I just came from practice, so in practice, so I've got my wet hair chlorine aura, my little chlorine throne here, and I go in Birch. Okay, so on that note, all of our winter sports are pretty much starting right now. I think most teams have had their tryouts. We had ours last week, so we're all done with that. But before that, before break, we had our play, and that was a pretty big success. I think a lot of people really liked that. And then we had a break, and our break was pretty good. And other than that, there hasn't been too much going on. On the senior side of things, we're just cramming college apps right now. We have, like, one more month left, and some people are hearing back from schools. My brother goes to college in Pennsylvania, so I applied everywhere in Pennsylvania, and I got into my Pennsylvania schools, so I'm very happy about that.
Good for you.
Thank you. But yeah, that's pretty much what's going on with the seniors.
Very good. I'm sure it's kind of a bittersweet time. You get done, but then you have to wait, but then you get to be very excited. So I'm sure with the first acceptance, that was a big relief, correct?
Yeah, it was good. It was my brother's school, so I was happy.
Oh, very nice. Very, very nice.
Great, so you get to hang out with your brother some more.
Yeah. Oh, he's so happy about it.
That's nice.
But you need to start renaming it. It's now "our" school, not "your brother's" school.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
I hope you're committed.
And it's going to be my apartment. He can live there with me.
So have you already decided you're going to go with your brother?
I mean, it depends on, like, when everything else comes out, but like, it's definitely one of my most appealing options because he has his own, like, apartment thing. So I told him, if I go to his school, we're going to get one of those luxury apartments, and we're just going to party.
Oh, that's great. What year is he?
She said "study."
Yeah, I said "study."
I know, I heard "study." I heard "study."
You guys can edit that out. I said "study."
No editing for any purposes. Come on. Have we taught you nothing? That's great. Very, very exciting. Good stuff. Okay. We have moved the math update since we had a few board members that were not here this evening. So this brings us to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. The participant will be limited to three minutes' duration. Lap time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the Board Secretary. And I always remind everyone, this is your time to speak to the Board of Education. Please don't mistake our silence for not caring. Any issues that need to be addressed can be -- I see Janet sitting in the second row. We can follow up, make sure that Janet has anyone's information, and I promise you, we will have answers back to you as soon as possible. So that being said, is there anyone that wishes to speak to the Board this evening? Yes? Come on up, and please state your name and address for the record.
Kelly Kelleher, 94 Independence Drive. On November 16th, there was an assembly given at Churchill Junior High School on cyberbullying and bias presented by the EBDP and Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, respectively. I would like to begin by applauding the EBDP for a well-constructive, informative, and necessary presentation on cyberbullying and the devastating consequences that can occur as a result. The issue I came here to address tonight is solely with the presentation given by the Prosecutor's Office on bias, which was ironically egregiously biased. I was only informed of this assembly when my son came home and told me he asked to be excused from the presentation after a video was played that featured a young black boy stating he's afraid cops might beat him up and do terrible things to him just for walking down the street, and another of a young white girl stating that she feels guilty for having a privilege that she doesn't deserve. The principal defended these clips, stating they were merely addressing student perspectives, but there are thousands of perspectives that could have been included, and every single one chosen here reflects a very specific bias of progressive political ideologies and politics do not belong in our schools. I'm proud of my son for removing himself from a situation where he felt his beliefs were being compromised, but I'm ashamed that our district ever put him in that position in the first place. My husband, his father, is a police officer. I have the utmost respect for our law enforcement, and any perspective that speaks negatively about our officers has absolutely no place in our schools. Our community is richly diverse, and every single child has the right, not privilege, to be proud of who they are and the skin they were born into. We need to teach our children to have confidence in themselves. We need to teach them to respect one another, to respect themselves, and to demand respect in return. As a parent, in order to be able to see the same presentation that the entire student body was shown without parental knowledge, I needed to complete an Oprah request. I strongly urge every single member on the Board and every single parent to fill out the same request for this presentation. The content included topics such as implicit or unconscious bias, racial microaggressions, and asking yourself, how can well-meaning people still have bias? The first of two embedded videos discuss the ideals of affirmative action, police brutality, and white privilege, just to name a few. All of these concepts are politically driven while attempting to hide behind the guise of student perspectives. The second of the embedded videos, recapping the tragedy of Tyler Clemente's suicide, even went as far as to insinuate that Christian beliefs could be harmful to others, specifically with those within the gay community. How dare you allow any perspective that speaks falsely, accusatory, or discriminatory against one's religious beliefs? Make no mistake, discrimination of any kind is wrong and should not be tolerated. Anyone participating in these acts should be disciplined immediately. I'm seeking nothing more than transparency and respect for the rights of the parents in this community. These are our children. The information they are shown in school isn't legally privileged, and my rights as a parent are not a legal privilege. I hope that my words here tonight not only bring this to the attention of the Board, but to the parents of this community. Talk to your children, get involved, and stay informed. And if nothing more, I am proud to stand up here and show my children that we do not back down from the truth. We stand up for what's right, and we fight for what we believe in.
Thank you, Ms. Kelleher. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the Board this evening? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion and move on to tonight's agenda. Is there any items that need separating out if I call for the combination of this evening's agenda?
You're combining everything together?
I am. We'll have the ability to discuss every item on the agenda.
That's fine.
May I please have a motion for the this evening's agenda? By Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Carrangelo. We are now going to have discussion on any item on this evening's agenda, so just tell us which section you'd like to speak to. Did you have something, Mark? I'm going to start with you, then.
Some things, just some cleanup, some complement. On the policies and bylaws, I've noticed there's been some changes to change he/she to they specifically, and then there's other new language where we didn't use, but now we're using he/she. Can we do, if we're going to go in either direction -- I'm sorry, this wasn't I. Can we do a word search of all the policies and get it correct? Because if we're deleting he/she to put the word "they" specifically, why would we be adding he/she as new language? That's my point in question. Shouldn't it be parodied across the policies?
I think so.
And that would not be a substantive change. That's ministerial change that that could be done without further Board approval?
Just alignment. Just alignment with what our -- yeah, we could.
Yeah, you could. So that would not require new introductions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem approving the policy.
But he's asking for consistency.
Exactly. Yep.
Yeah, and we do get our policies for the community and for, as the Board already knows, Strauss Esme drafts the policies, are reviewed by our policy committee, so we'll take a look at those and make sure they're aligned.
Should I go with the others, or?
Absolutely. Go for it, Mark.
Curriculum number four, the course revision name changes. The partner film and acting and the partner art, they used to be film and appreciation, art appreciation? Awesome changes. I read into it, I mean, I first saw it and I says, why are we changing the name? And apparently, it's a mentorship where we pick children to go into the self-contained class, am I saying correctly? To partner with them. You know, personal experience, when I was in high school, I'll share for a second here. I'm sorry, it was kind of wrong and different back then. The self-contained classes, you never saw them. The kids weren't with the other classes and integrated and everything. And an unfortunate incident I had that I got injured, I was taken out of gym class. They put me in a self-contained class during gym class. I met a group of students that I never would have met in high school and talked to and played ping pong with them and baked cookies and did art projects. And it was just like, you know, I get emotional when I think about it because it's like, back then, we kept things like that separate, and it's a shame. But, you know, there's so many people in society talking about what's going bad in education. This is one thing that's going good in education. When I read that and I saw that we're going to have our kids as mentors with our children and getting credit for that course, I wanted to applaud it. I thought that was amazing. So just seeing the words, like, why are we changing the name, you know, led me to read in further and do my research. And I think that's all I had to bring up today. I told you, it's just a couple of my -- oh, and there's an abstention that I have to do. Do I do that now?
Not yet.
During the roll call.
Okay, so we're doing it all together, so then I abstain when I do my vote.
On that item, for that specific.
Well, she blended everything together. That's why, yes.
Yeah, but.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
We'll help you, too.
That's it.
Actually, with the name change, I had a question, the pre-calc honors to AP. Was this a class that they were taking the AP exam before? Was it AP-level class? So.
No, it was just the honors class, but College Board has now come out with the AP.
So is the content of the -- because it said just a name change. Is the content as well?
Yes, the content's the same.
So the content is the same, so technically, those kids could have been taking the AP exam then, or? How does that?
It wasn't an AP-approved course from College Board, and now it is.
No, that's what I understand, but you're saying the content's exactly the same. So the kids will now be able to take the AP course?
Correct. Yes, that's right.
So then the kids who were taking this honors-level class were having the exact same educational process, just didn't have that.
Yes, but now it's an AP course, and will be on their transcripts as such.
So that's pretty big, then?
Yeah.
Great. Yes. Vic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I -- the name changes Mark just brought to our attention came out of an excellent curriculum meeting. There was a really good discussion. There were really a great presentation by our staff, as usual, and this is during one of the presentations for our new elective, an English elective, one of the teachers quoted something that a student had said, and she said, it was that she was glad to see that there was going to be a class in a specific type of fiction because she never has a chance to just read for pleasure. That between all of the reading this student has to do for all her classes, there's never time to just sit down and read a book because you want to read, you love to read. And I, at the same time that I felt, it was very bittersweet. I felt very bad, being an avid reader, that kids feel that pressure, but that's the way it is today. Their time is just taken by everything, so that reading for pleasure becomes a luxury. So I also wanted to compliment our staff for recognizing things like this, for listening to our students, and for coming up with ways to have them academically, within the course of the school day, actually do something that they would love to do. So just wanted to compliment them.
Very cool. Very nice. And I saw a fair view, it looks like. Is that on track?
I'm sorry.
Fair view's back on track.
Sorry, sorry.
No, it's not you. It's my hand.
Jeff and Susanna?
Just very briefly, thank you. Just at the risk of being repetitive, completely agree with what Mark said before about when I first read the titles, the same thing, like, partner art? Like, what is that? And, you know, and when you look at what we're doing there, it's just, you know, so wonderful that we're mixing. It's not just take a class to learn art, but you're learning other skills and giving kids this opportunity to interact. So which is kudos to the curriculum team. And, you know, the additional classes that we're adding, again, just the ongoing, you know, looking ahead and, you know, seeing what's coming up. So just, you know, again, kudos to the team.
Excellent. Jeff?
All right, thank you. I have two items. One is actually on Ms. Becker's comment regarding the EOA course. And I agree, it's great to find historical fiction, fiction, crime and mystery, and all of that. The one thing, as being a part of that meeting, it jumped out at me. I don't know if it's a huge concern. I, being highly aware of current events and the world, I don't know how entirely comfortable I am about high school students reading about murder. You know, I understand it's in a literary context. I'm not blind to that. I just don't, I just know it's a slippery slope to say we're going to be reading about crime and mystery. And that then got me thinking about the books that I read growing up, and Cold Blood, and some of these other New Jersey, I mean, you know, that story about the rest stop on the Parkway. I mean, it was a pretty scary story, and I don't want anything, you know what? I don't want to be responsible for putting any seeds in. Will it happen? I don't know. Who knows? You know, it is my hope that it does not, and I do raise a caution flag. No response needed, but it is something that did weigh on my mind as a result of the curriculum meeting, and I want to go on record as stating that. Secondly, I do have a, just a point-of-order question on the policy changes to either Mr. Carrangelo, but probably more directed to Mr. Giuliani regarding quorum 0163. There is a reference in that section to NJSA 18A 12 to 24. I want to understand better the changes there in relationship to conflict of interest. You know, for exclusionary purposes, I know we have an educator on the council, on the Board of Ed, that I don't want eliminated from any conversations due to an unusual ruling, nor myself having my family's involvement in various activities around town.
So I think I can answer. You're talking about the doctrine of necessity, the policy changes dealing with that?
Primarily Board Members in Conflict, Section B, which leaves an area of opportunity for, if I'm reading correctly, to either a challenge or a school board attorney rendering an opinion ad hoc on conflict of interest. And, you know, and on this Board, I would really, I only see really two individuals, whether it be Ms. Gwass as an educator or myself as a spouse of a township-elected official, where that might happen, and I just want to get clarity on how that could happen and how it could be invoked.
Yeah, let me just look at the thing.
Reference 3C.
Okay, so let me just explain. So it says, they put in Board Members in Conflict, and then a majority of Board in Conflict. So what this is referring to, it's talking about 18A 12 dash 24. There is a, so school board attorneys, I can render advice of whether or not you have a conflict or not. What this is really talking about, it goes into C, which is the doctrine of necessity. There are certain instances, and we've given you guys guidance on this dais, and separately, of when you can and can't vote. Let me give you probably the best example of doctrine of necessity when it's invoked. When you have a Board who has a number of Board Members who have family members that work for the district, that Board Member can't evaluate the superintendent, but it gets more complicated. They can't vote for the collective negotiations agreement. So as we said, if you're a member of the NJA and you work in a different district, you can't be on the negotiations team, but you can vote for the actual memorandum of agreement and approve it. So if a majority of you, let's just say, six of you, had family members that worked for the district, and we had to bring forward a vote on the collective negotiations agreement, and only three people out of nine could vote, you don't have enough to vote. So what you do is you declare a, it's a doctrine of necessity, and it's a fairly complicated process. You have to pass a resolution. The resolution has to specifically set forth what each Board Member's conflicts are. So matchy Kobe, wife works for district, or you do it. That's passed. It's then posted on your website, and it's submitted to the School Ethics Commission. So you have to use it in very, very limited circumstances. I'm not really sure what they meant, what they mean by "B." If a school board member renders an opinion, a Board Member has a conflict, or if acted upon by a Board Member is a violation. Because the 18A 12 dash 24 ultimately encompasses the ability to call the doctrine of necessity. So that's really what this is about, is clarifying what is the doctrine of necessity, what you can call it. It's very, very, you've never done it here in my years of representing you because you don't have those types of conflicts.
No, and thank you for that explanation. I do appreciate that. I just don't want some of this language applied in other areas that would preclude any Board Member in a stretch for recusal based on, you know, we have a teacher, or I'm married to a town councilwoman.
So I would, one of the things that I think we can do, because the statute that's referenced there provides very specific instances of what would constitute a conflict. So I think we can print that, ensure that among the Board. But for example, things like that not having an interest in a business organization or engage in any business transaction or professional activity which is in substantial conflict with the proper discharge of the duties as a Board Member. That's one of the items listed as a potential conflict of interest. Or using or attempting to use his official position to secure unwarranted privileges, advantages, or employment for himself, members of his immediate family, or others. I think these are just, these are things that the Board Attorney is typically reviewed at reorganization, doing the school ethics conflicts and things to remain, to keep in mind and maintain in good stead. But I think as a, just kind of a reminder, this is a good thing for us to just share with the entire Board, and I'll have that printed out and emailed out.
No, and I appreciate, which would have been my next request. So with that said, I would like to motion to table this particular item. Until that printout is made available, I'm not comfortable voting on something I haven't read.
Well, just so you know, I think, I mean, this is just for introduction tonight, right?
Correct.
This is not, you're not adopting it?
That's right. This is a reading.
This is just a reading?
Got it.
So my suggestion is, look at it, and if you had it, we can do it the next time. This is actually the doctrine of necessity, you know, again, you've never invoked it, ever.
It's a reading. I appreciate it. Point taken. Thank you.
Can I suggest anything else?
No.
No? Any other questions, discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I don't, certainly don't want to belabor this, this point, but I, Jeff brought up the, his issue with the, the crime and mystery literature, and I, I thought it was a valid one and articulated very well at the meeting. In my mind, I was, although there are some excellent contemporary mystery writers out there who are, forget even about the crime aspect, their writing is so superb. I was also thinking about Sherlock Holmes, Agatha Christie, even if you think about it, we, our students study Shakespeare, and the tragedies of Shakespeare are full of very dark subject matters, even some of the comedies. So I think within the proper context, and I, I do believe that our, our staff will choose the books for this course wisely. Again, I, the Sherlock Holmes mysteries are written so well, just from a, a writing, a master writing point of view, or even Agatha Christie, the way she pieces things together, it's, it's just, it's so engaging. So I'd like to think, although again, I hope it does include some contemporary writers, because there are some fabulous ones out there, I also think that these classic mystery writers, we can learn so much from how to craft a story and a character about, that's just my opinion.
No, in response, I mean, I agree with everything you said, and it's strictly a cautionary tale.
Got it.
I, I've read-
Isn't that a book?
Yes, it is. I've read, I've read, you know, I've read some contemporary work, that I'm thinking, hmm, I could see, you know, somebody I know doing that, that's pretty bad, so.
I thought you were going to say, gee, I could see myself in there.
No, no, I choose my own advice. So, so it's, look, again, no response needed, cautionary tale, simple as that, and I will trust the staff until further notice that they're going to choose wisely, that's all.
So it's more about the writing, not the act? Right? I mean, really?
The, a mystery or crime novel is the basis of the plot, is some kind of a mystery or crime, and it does, a crime doesn't always necessarily mean a murder, right?
Makes a better book.
There's, there's lots of crimes out there, and, but, some of the classic mystery writers, it's, it's like a masterclass in, in how to write, how to craft a story.
Great point. Thank you. Mark? Did you have? Oh, you didn't have? I'm sorry.
No, no, he was-
Oh, okay, my apologies. Anyone else? No, okay, then I'm going to ask the secretary to please call the roll, and for those that need something to abstain, if you are going to vote yes for the agenda this evening, then you would just say yes with the exception of an abstention on, and let us know what the abstention is. Correct, Mr. Giuliani?
That's correct.
Okay. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes, except I am abstaining on Board of Education, item two minutes, November 17.
Noted. Mr. Carrangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes, with an abstention on Financial Services Number Two, purchase order P is in Papa, 2303440.
Could you please repeat that, P, 230?
2303440.
Noted.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gloss?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes, with the exception, Financial Services Number Two, purchase order P 2303444.
Noted, and President Lacks?
Yes, Christian Carey is bringing us to our committee reports, information items, and for the good of the court this evening for the board. Who would like to start? Okay, Mr. Sizmar?
I guess I'll put it under new business. We have a reorganization meeting coming up. I've brought this up at past reorganization meetings. I would like to have a forum prior to or at the beginning of that meeting where board members would be allowed to ask potential candidates a question in a public setting. I always liked the transparency, not to accuse anybody, but people could say things behind closed doors. If somebody's running for an important position as president or vice president of this board, I think board members should be entitled to ask questions of that person in a public setting. So my motion is to have that type of forum either next meeting or at the beginning of the reorg meeting before we vote for our president and vice president.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, discussion, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a discussion on this? Mrs. Becker?
As we, as we've talked about before, Mark, and this is one of those things I think we agree to disagree on, this is not running for public office as board members do in November. This is an internal issue of the board, and I don't necessarily think that it is involved to the extent of being, I don't want to, I'm trying to think of a word besides scrutinize or interrogate, because that has a, a very negative connotation, I know you don't mean that. So somebody please help me out with the magic chip here, I need it, the source. I, I don't, I, I don't happen to, I, I disagree with you. I don't think it's, it's necessary, I think that it would be an exercise that might lead to discussion on the board that would, could be contrived or artificially created. I don't, it's, it's simply, it's like a committee electing a chair or a president, it's an internal thing, it's not, again, it's not running for office, that's, that's my opinion.
Is it, you feel it's not for public to?
No, oh, no, it has nothing to do with that. It's, it's, we are up here every two weeks, and in numerous committee meetings where there are staff and residents, where we talk about how we think about things and how we feel about things, and we vote certain ways, all our votes are in public, and I feel that people get nominated by their peers and we vote, that it, it is not something that needs to rise to the level of a debate. Public, not public, anything, I, it has nothing to do with in public. We show ourselves and say our opinions, like I'm doing now, every single meeting. There's, there's, it's not a matter of hiding anything.
For me, when I came on, we've had this discussion, you know, I'm just trying to see everyone's perspective, though I can learn.
Of course.
But for me, when I came on, it might have benefited myself if whoever was running for president, vice president had a little discussion, because I didn't know anybody exactly, at least you don't, so, I, I never even met you guys before, so that might have helped me then, now I don't need it, obviously.
Right, that happens, and that will happen every January when there's a new board member.
That's what I'm saying.
So, but you, you said something that's important, and that's why I said to Mark, we agree to disagree. There isn't necessarily a right or wrong here, I'm not saying Mark's wrong, I'm right, or vice versa.
Which is certain instances.
I don't think it's necessary. Again, we present ourselves and our views on things every time we vote, or raise our hands to speak in a meeting, or at a committee meeting, so-
While the public knows who we are, but, again, it would have helped me specifically, so there could be instances where that might occur.
Sure, anytime there's a new board member coming on in January, they're going to face that. Yes, that's a good point.
Mr. Winston?
Thank you, yes, Ms. Becker, I appreciate your comments, and you, you said a couple of things there. I think the word you were looking for was accountability or inquiry, or at least that's my guess.
I'm sorry?
The words that you may have been having struggled finding, you said you couldn't find a couple of words, so I'm going to throw a couple in there. I don't know if these are your words, but you said, account, what I'm going to throw in is what I would be looking for was accountability and inquiry, and I don't think you necessarily have to add the term that would be combative suggestively as debate. I do agree with you that the public does put us up here as a group of nine to do all of those things, and I would equate that to say that the public has put up, put us up here on this bus, and I do believe at the same time the public has a right to know who's driving that bus. And that is where the power of the president comes into play. So I have inquired over the last four years on this council, on this board, of who is and what is the responsibility of the president, and it's been pretty specific. The president's job, as I've been told multiple times by you, by President Lacks and, and the prior president, who no longer serves in this council, that the, that the president's sole job is to appoint committees and write the agenda. And I think that is true, and I think it's that writing of the agenda or approving the agenda which does dictate the direction of this, of this, of, of the direction of this board. Now, in the la, I keep a list of things that we wait for, and, and by waiting, meaning things that have been brought up, that said that would come back on the agenda and never have, and that concerns me, because that does fall into the one of the two categories that has been stated by both you and, and President Lacks. Things like chain of communication coming from the superintendent has never been addressed. Things like receiving a, a edited demographers report has not been addressed since we received the last one in public. Lack of productive facilities meetings. I started asking for this meeting back in December when the high school was first mentioned that would be built, now we are December 1st, that committee, to my best of my knowledge, is yet to meet, and that is the formation of a committee which falls into those two categories, which has been so articulated to me by you, Ms. Becker, by, by President Lacks, and a prior president. That hasn't come back up. Timely receipt of board, of board meeting minutes. We've talked about not receiving meeting minutes just prior to the meeting, yet just tonight, we did receive minutes to a meeting, which I barely skimmed over, yet will ultimately vote sadly to approve, in spite of the fact that I will first to admit, I didn't have the time. We talked about cross-community relationships, that has never been revisited. We've had, we've had discussions involving districting in, in that township for the last three years, and that has never made it back to agenda. Capacity, current capacity report since the Hammerhill change, that is never coming back to the agenda. I had asked for about, at the beginning of school, for an exploratory on the bus riders' agreement, a bill of rights, that has never come back to the agenda. So, I say this, not to condemn anybody who hasn't brought it back, but to reinforce Mr. Sizmar's point, that we better know who's driving this bus, because the public put us here, and the public has a right and a demand to know, do we have a leader or don't we? That is my point, and I will vote this, I expect it to be voted down out of the reason that was given to us last year, very simply, that is not the way it's ever been done. Thank you.
As the current leader, Jeff, let me ask you, of those items, and you have every right to ask those, how many of those have you put forward and specifically asked for?
Every one of these items has-
To me?
Excuse me, do not interrupt, I will invoke Roberts' rules for interruption. Matt, if you'd like to read where I can be interrupted in my time in responding to a question by anybody?
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right? I know the rule, if you want to let President Lacks know that interruptions will not be permitted under Roberts' rules, I will wait for that explanation to be made before I'm interrupted again.
Well, I think right now, I don't have the Roberts rule in front of me, so, you know, you're asking me to opine on a rule that I don't have in front of me.
I can dig it out of my phone and read it, but I won't.
I don't need to, I defer, I was going to ask you a question, but I will let you finish.
The answer is, you are the president. Every one of these items that I've mentioned have been, and, and if I'm wrong, anybody on this board, correct me, has been requested and has been stated, and if I need to dig back through minutes, I will, every one of them was to be revisited. None of them has hit the agenda in the 12 months that you've been on the seat, and some of the months that Ms. Becker was on the seat. It never, ever happened, all of them. I wouldn't have said it if it wasn't requested, I keep a list.
Okay, and my question to you then was, and I wasn't trying to be argumentative, is have you asked myself or the previous presidents specifically for this? I know what you're saying, but a lot of times, respectfully, Jeff, you tend to like to bring things up in public, but there haven't been the ability for someone to actually look into something.
Fair enough, I'll answer.
For example, there are board members that will come to me and say, can you bring this back? Can you have this presentation? Can you do such and such? When you do that, for myself, for the previous presidents, then you have the ability as a president to do that. But for you to bring up things that, yes, there's a lot that goes in, as you know this, being here for four years and running a district, unfortunately, not everything will come back in as timely a manner as we may all like.
12 months is more than a time, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm just saying to you, unless you come to me, Jeff, specifically, and say, President Lacks, I would like to request this be dealt with ASAP, then I, how do I satisfy the fact that you want it?
Sure, I'll answer. That's a very good point. My answer is, it is not my job to tell you how to do your job correctly. These are items as the president, that is your role, to bring them back. As I stated, I've been told over and over again, the president's job is to set the agenda and to choose committee. It is your job then at that point to, to organize those thoughts as a strong leader, to know when to bring them back. If you can't bring them back professionally, you could say, we are not going to bring them back, they just don't die on the vine. I could point to several off this list, I mean, 12 months, all right, to your answer, 12 months. I've asked every month for 12 months that the, the building's facility, we've had two meetings regarding this, one in 2018, one two weeks ago, regarding the new high school. Now, you know what, President Lacks, I respect your comment, you're saying, why didn't I tell you to do your job? My answer is, because it's not my job to tell you to do your job, that's why you're president.
Okay, well, that wasn't what I was speaking to, but you're speaking specifically to a committee that there is a chair for that. So have you gone to the particular chair of that committee to ask for that?
Every month. I have requested, what is, Ms. Gloss, please.
No, 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 Jeff, I-
You can't, you can't delegate responsibility like this when you're president.
I'm not delegating responsibility, but I am not a committee chair, so when you're talking about committee meetings, the committee chairs, and you know this, as a committee chair, are the ones that designate meeting times. If you have, and, and this is the one thing I can say to you, whether it's me or someone else sitting here, if you have a problem with a committee chair not putting on an item on the agenda or creating the meeting that you'd like to see, your first thing should be to that person and say, hey, can you please do this meeting? If you don't get that response that you're looking for, then you absolutely should come to me, but if you are not speaking to a committee chair, that's not my job.
The committee chair doesn't put things on the agenda, you do.
No, no, you're talking about, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry then, because I'm completely misunderstanding here then.
Sure.
I thought you were talking about the facilities committee.
I, I just let, I just read off a list that I believe was nine or 10 items that we have stated will come back for further discussion based on more information needed. It is your job, it is the job of the, of the board president to organize these thoughts. Ms. Lacks, it is not an easy job, I don't necessarily envy it, but I could assure you if I had it, I would do it. And, and what we continuously get is to kicking the can down the road, hoping that these things don't come back, we've taken things off the agenda for further discussion, and they have vanished, all right? And, and normally, under typical rules, it would come back, and there would be an explanation stated, say by the superintendent, or at least the board president to state what happened to those things. It is a fair question, the public deserves that answer, and we simply don't get it. I'm not sure how you're defending this, I, I, you know, that's your call, but the, the fact of the matter is, everything I just read is, is resourceful and, and available in minutes, and it simply hasn't been delivered. Back to the motion, the motion is, can we have an inquiry, accountability, questioning, and, and really fitness to do, or desire to fill that seat? I think the public deserves to know, we can't have a continuation of what has been occurring on this, on this board. We have some very critical issues coming up, we're talking about bringing new high school referendums, we're talking, we have, we've had security conversations over the last couple of months, we've had communications issues with, with, you know, cross-community relationship issues that have come up over the last few months, and none of them are being brought up. None of them are being brought up, President Lacks. We need to understand publicly why we fall short and how we're going to fix it for the betterment of the district. It is not an ego thing, it's a district thing. That's it.
Okay, Jeff, so, I'm not trying to debate this with you, and I think there's two separate issues going on here. I think that, that Mark's motion is completely separate from the, what you're bringing up right now. Unless you're bringing it up to try and make me look as not effective because you'd like me not to be in the seat, which is fine, and you don't have to vote for me, but the point is, if you're bringing things up, my point to you is, I'd like to see an email to me, a text to me, something saying, I'm a little concerned, I've asked for this information, I haven't seen it come back. Because we all know, Dr. Valeski, his staff, they are incredibly busy running a school di- district. And our job, of course, is not to run it, but to make sure it's well done. I don't have to keep telling you that. But the point is, I am not disagreeing with you. There are things that are beyond our control at times, and there are things that we may be a little unhappy with. I think you're wonderful, so don't take this the wrong way. I think Dr. Valeski is an excellent superintendent. I think we are so blessed to have him. But the reality is, does that mean that with everything on his plate, there may be something that may not come back to the board as soon as we would possibly like for it to? Absolutely. And are there going to be times that we're going to be very frustrated by that? Absolutely. And are there times where maybe, you know what, he could have gotten it done a little faster? Maybe sometimes the overwhelming nature of all the moving parts of running a school district are going to make it just a reality. In real time, Jeff, in our jobs, in our lives, something comes up, we identify something, we fix it, we move on. It doesn't always, and you've seen that here, it doesn't always work that quickly. But all I can say to you, and whether it's me sitting in the seat or somebody else sitting in this seat, is if you have an issue, if you have something that you don't feel is being addressed, at least give me or whoever the president is the respect to go to them and say, hey, can you please tell me why I'm waiting for this? Because I know you're a big, long list, and I'm sure that everything on there is completely legitimate, I'm not trying to take away any of that. The only thing I can say to you is, that I don't remember conversations or emails from you saying to me specifically, can you please address this? So yes, I oversee the agenda, but the reality is, if something hasn't been put on the agenda quick enough for you, and I don't necessarily catch that, because I am a human being, Dr. Valeski is a human being, Mr. Juliana, we're all human beings, then let me know. And I will try and address it, Jeff, that's the only thing I can tell you. Because I can assure you, in my last 11 months of sitting in this seat, I have done my absolute best, whether you agree with that or not, whether you're happy with that or not, that's not for, up for debate. But to my knowledge, everything that's come to me that I've been asked, I have answered the board members. So if you choose not to come to me with something, I don't know how to help you. That's all I can say, Jeff.
I have no response to that.
Well, I'm sorry that you feel that way. And as I said, the only thing I can tell you, Jeff, is moving forward, whether it be me or someone else, you have to not hold up and make your list and wait. You need to, as these things come up, you need to go to that person and say, President so-and-so, this is something that needs to come back. This is of utmost importance. And then, and in that way, that person has the ability to say to Dr. Valeski and Mr. Juliana, somebody, can we please get an accounting of what's going on here? I understand your frustration, Jeff, and I understand that where you're coming from is trying to make sure that everything is done well. But again, we're all doing the same thing. We are not paid to be up here. You know, no one is getting paid to be here. We're doing it out of the goodness of our hearts. And the reality is, there's going to be times that we all agree on things, and that's an easy one, there's times we all disagree on things. I mean, you have to be able to work together because we are party of nine here. So I don't know what else to tell you. I'm certainly not trying to take away any of your feelings on this. I'm only saying that unless you decide you want to work with other people on the board and you want to come to the president with specific items, it's very difficult to sit there and to cast stones and say that things aren't being done.
Ms. Lacks, feelings are in fact, I'm sorry you feel that way, and, you know, you've said so much, you said so much in there. I got to tell you, if I said that to any of my employer, I'd be fired. But I'll stand down. I have nothing further.
Okay, I see these ladies, and then, I know, Mark, you said you were.
I feel sometimes bound, because some of the things that get said are difficult to address, because I think something on that list was addressed but enclosed. So then we're stuck with the, can we discuss, you know what I'm saying? Can we discuss this when I think one of those items was addressed? But that's not for public meeting. My concern is, the same as it was last year, which is, the idea that this has to be discussed in an open public forum when it's for the governance of nine. It seems to be such a strong push to be confront, we use, well, I don't use, a lot of words are used, like transparency and accountability, but it doesn't, I don't know that it serves that purpose. I do believe that it becomes confrontational, it becomes destructive and fractious. This is supposed to be for self-governance amongst ourselves. If you feel that way, or you have these opinions, those are of course yours. And just like all of us, each one of us has an equally weighted vote, one of nine. So you have your vote. But the idea that there needs to be these large public statements made to detract and, you know, list and catch mistakes, it's not, I don't think, in any way constructive towards the work of this board. I'm just concerned. It's come up two years, the culture of the board is, needs repair and to become more constructive and more cohesive, and this idea that we constantly need to come back to these public listings of flaws or faults, I don't think serves that purpose.
Thank you, Mrs. Chu.
I agree with what Ms. Guas just said, but I also wanted to just add, I, as board members, I think, you know, on the one hand, yes, the president sets the agenda, but as board members, we have a collective accountability to follow up and raise concerns, and we have, for the good of the cause, every, every meeting where we have the opportunity to bring back up. So it is best not to kind of let things fester, you know, if there's a question that went unanswered, there is for the good of the cause to re-raise those issues. And I think it's up to us as nine board members, again, none of us are paid, I really give a lot of credit to the folks who sit in those seats that put in the extra work. As board members, we all put in a lot of work, you know, reviewing the material, coming prepared, serving on numerous committees, additional community work that we do outside of the school board, on top of busy, you know, whether it's as a mom, you know, raising kids for work-at-home moms, or for moms that have full-time jobs, or moms that have grown-up kids and full-time jobs. It's a lot, right? So it's not for any one person to be responsible for the agenda and the priorities of the board. It is our collective responsibility, so I just wanted to say that. And I also recognize, you know, there have been a lot of questions asked, and, you know, this administration has been incredibly busy working, working really hard on many of the issues that, you know, COVID, you know, the things that we've been doing for the last two years, I mean, they're, you know, that's just a piece of it, the new, you know, new curriculum, there's just a lot that goes on in the district. So while, you know, there are a number of items that I wish we could do all of them as, you know, immediately, I think that's one of the things we need to work on collectively as a board. Let's have a strategic meeting, identify the priorities, work on, you know, work with staff and administration to identify those priorities so that we can put the resources to address the issues. Because I don't agree that there are a number of priorities that need to be addressed, but it is not the job of the president to make sure that the single person that makes sure it all gets done, it is our collective responsibility.
Thank you, excellent point. On Mr. Crangelo, sorry.
First of all, we're doing better than we think we are. Have you seen other boards out there? So I've been on this board nearly three years, and we're doing better than we think we are. Whether we agree or disagree, we're pretty good. So I don't want to hear anything where we're just, you know, having arguments and all that. We're pretty good. I've been on state boards, you know, I've been on other state boards before, participated as vice president on some boards, and you should see that. So let's, you know, put it where it is, we're trying really hard. Jeff cares, everyone cares, you know what I mean? I've had stuff not answered. I handle my business different, you know what I mean? I want to handle it a different way. But we are doing better than we appear to be doing. So, no, I'm not done, so.
[laughter]
I've interrupted plenty.
It's choreographed, too.
Yeah, choreographed. However, you know, I understand Jeff, you know, you care, you're trying, so I get it. But we are doing really good, in my opinion. The motion is for what? To see if we want to have an open discussion on who's going to run for president, and we could ask questions and things like that. Our thought should be, is it beneficial to, A, do that, or B, have it public, is that, you know, why would we do it publicly? I don't, you know, I'm still trying to have a reason why we would do it. I would have seconded, you know, just to see how it goes, and we're voted for it. However, not everything we do needs to be public, right? But I do want to make sure that everyone understands we are doing better than we think we are. Because I've been sitting here for nearly three years. And, you know, I honor you, I honor you, I honor everybody here, because I don't know that, I say publicly, I don't speak as much, but I do have a big map all the time. However, I don't say a lot, but I like to do my business privately, and I come up there and do it privately. And some of my stuff has not been answered. I look you all in the eye and tell you that, I haven't had my stuff answered. But I don't dwell on that, because I know, like Susanna said, they're busy. And I try to put my emotional thoughts of like, the world goes on, blah, blah, Mark, you know, though sometimes I think it does. But I try to, you know, have a heart about it and wait, and then, you know, see how it goes. So I don't know if I added to this conversation. However, we have to make sure that we realize we are better than we think. I'm on committees, Susanna's killing it, I'm on either policy committee, I'm on other committees too, and, you know, we're doing pretty good. So let's not pretend like we're disjointed or whatever.
Thank you, Mark. Who's, you can go. You can go first, then me.
I'll try and bring it back to the context of the motion. I know it went to a lot of different places, that was not my intention, to be honest. Some of the things that came up, I do not think it's an internal function where we vote for the president and vice presidents of the board. I do use the word transparency. I think everything that we do should be transparent, except for those items in executive session, which are people's names, legal things, and stuff like that. We all just, you know, ran again to be up here, three of us. There was a public forum, you know, thanks to the union for running that, because we were asking for the public's vote. So we took questions in public, so people could hear us. Alls I am asking for is to, if somebody says I want to be president, I want to ask them a question in public. That makes sense. It's parity with every other type of election. This is an election. When we start to talk about things like, it's going to be, or I think, maybe the tense was off, but the tense was, oh, it becomes confrontational at that point. We've never had one. So I don't know how somebody could predict confrontation when we've never had it. I asked the first time, I said, can the candidates make a public statement? And then open it up and say, hey, would any board member, I limited it to board members, because that would take out, you know, people coming in and going to all different tangents. I was told, no. Well, we've never done that, we don't do that. Well, if you want to be president or vice president of this board, a very important function in this township, and you refuse to do a public statement, you refuse to take a question from a board member in public, which would be professional, because if we're not, the attorney can step in and call someone out of order. I can't see how anybody would vote no to want that position and not be able to take a public question from, just from another board member. That's my opinion, that's the reason I'm instituting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mark, you are absolutely right, and I'm going to take it a step further, and I know some people are tired of hearing this number, but I've been on this board 22 years, and I'll tell you, we are doing a hecka lot better than most boards. We all encounter those YouTube videos or articles where there's cringe-worthy stuff, and, yeah, I'm real proud of us, a group of nine individuals who come together, we're kind of, it's kind of an artificial intimacy, if you think about it. We need to talk and reveal our thoughts about things, when there are things about each other personally that we don't even know. But I never, and if I've ever implied this, I'll apologize right now, I've never, ever implied that we should do something simply for the sake that it's always been done. I may address historical precedent as a frame of reference for things. But first of all, about the agenda. I think there's an interesting aspect to what Jeff and Lori were talking about that might be useful for Bernie and Victor and even perhaps Matt to talk about, actually, the process of putting together the agenda, and the responsibilities of the board secretary, the superintendent, the role of the president in that. And this is, again, something that Matt could certainly, could certainly speak to. Because I think you will, you will see in the process that the president's role is, you talk about set the agenda, there's literal and figurative. I would like at some point for us to, for, to talk about how the agenda is devised. There probably should be a better process for follow-up, but I will disagree with you that it is the president's fault or not fault, and go to what, perhaps fault, again, I'm having a problem with my internal thesaurus tonight. Perhaps Susanna put it well, that we, the president, somebody has to run the meeting, somebody has to literally take us through the agenda, somebody gets to approve the agenda in advance. But we have an accountability as the nine members up here that we should never abdicate because we don't have a title. And that's something that I've heard over the years that I do take exception to. I, again, Mark, I, this isn't a matter of right or wrong. But by putting ourselves up here and talking about issues and giving our opinions, whether it's on curriculum, or talking about a change order, or talking about a fee increase or reduction, or any item that comes on agenda, we reveal how we feel about issues. I can't think of what we would need to question each other about to determine whether or not someone could be president or vice president that we don't already know if we haven't done our jobs in listening to each other. And I believe that we do. So I, it's not a matter of, oh, we've always done it this way, or, I don't see the need for it. You want my phone?
Sorry.
That's okay. It's yours. I don't see the need for it.
Well, that's why we vote.
I'm so sorry?
That's why we vote, so that's the whole point.
Mark, sorry.
I'm sorry, I would just counter one point, and I love that we can disagree and still be friends.
Of course, we always agree to disagree, always.
I don't see the harm in it. So, you know, for somebody to, like I said, to deny it, I haven't heard any good reason to not have it.
What's to be accomplished?
What's to be accomplished? Because people speak in public differently sometimes than they speak behind the scenes. And I can't bring out specific examples, nor am I going to accuse anybody, but being a board member for the past several years, there are things that are said behind the scenes that are not said in public, and it's not meant to catch anybody, and it's not meant to be confrontational. And I do my research, and I'm very professional when I'm up here, but I do ask hard questions. And, you know, if someone, I said, if someone fears being asked a professional question, or doesn't want to be asked a professional question in a public forum that's asking for my vote, I can only speak for me, I will not vote for that person. It's somebody who's dodging a public forum where the members who are voting for them, it would be like not showing up at the thing that the union had for questions. We were asking the public to vote for us, we showed up there, ask us any question you want. There's going to be people that are going to vote tonight, they're going to say, no, absolutely, Mark, you cannot ask me a question in public about the job I'm going to do as president or vice president. My opinion does not sit well with me if someone says that, because they're unwilling, and I'm not going to be unprofessional up here, you folks know me. Am I passionate? Absolutely. Do I do my research? Absolutely. And I try to be as truthful as possible. Do I ask hard questions? Absolutely. That's my job. That's what the public has put their trust in me to do, is to protect the children of this township and ask the tough questions to get the job done in a professional manner, in a passionate manner. So if someone doesn't want to be asked a question, that causes me pause. That's all.
Respectfully, Mark, can I please answer this? Give me, Vicki, I want to just answer this, I'm sorry. Respectfully, I appreciate your opinion, but I have to tell you, I do feel it's a little misleading to try and make it as though if somebody votes against you on this, that somehow they have something to hide. Because the reality is, every member of this board goes every three years through the EBA forum, and they are asked questions that are difficult questions. And every day we are asked questions, and every time we're up here. So I can speak for myself, if you ask me, am I afraid of anything you're going to ask? So I can speak for myself, if you ask me, am I afraid of anything you're going to ask me in public? No, I am the second most senior board member here. I've been doing this job for a really long time, whether you like what I stand for or not, the reality is, I have been a good and honest member of this board, I have voted with my conscience, I've done a lot of really good things over the years. Whether you think that means that I should sit in this seat, you are absolutely entitled to that opinion, but the reality is, there's nothing that you're going to ask me in front of a group of people that has any bearing on whether or not you believe I should sit in this seat. You've worked with me for years, so I'm not exactly sure what it is you think for myself or anyone else running for the, the board, that you think that someone's trying to hide something, because I assure you, Mark, I know for myself, I don't think I'm trying to hide anything, I don't think anybody else is, even the people we disagree with. But I, I, you know, you are entitled to your view, I just asked you to please refrain from saying that if somebody disagrees with you, that somehow they have something to hide, because that's a little bit misleading.
I, I have to answer that, since you went to me directly. I didn't go to anybody directly.
Okay.
I don't believe, and I could be corrected if I used the word hide, I said that somebody would be afraid to ask, answer a question in public. Other people are taking this to where somebody has something to hide, somebody's going to be confrontational, somebody's going to be unprofessional. None of that was in my motion. My motion is simply, if someone wants my vote, and that's my opinion, so when, if you don't agree with my opinion, that's fine, but I stated it as my opinion, not at anybody directly. And alls I said was, yes, I think if someone does not want to answer a question in public and wants my vote, that causes me pause. I didn't say anybody was hiding anything.
No, that, that's fine.
I didn't point out anything. I did not use the word hide.
Okay.
So I, I hate when my words are changed, because I do things in a passion professional manner, and I believe in what I believe in, and I stand up for what I believe in, without personal direct attacks. So I hate when my words are changed.
My apologies.
And something's added in there that I didn't say. And I'm, and I'm, and it's, I'm not going to apologize to Lori. I'm trying to, to, to bring my motion back to what it was. I want to ask questions, that's why I brought up the motion. If someone doesn't want to be asked questions, then they vote no. That's it.
And I'm going to say, Mark, that I take that, that same exception. My voting no on this doesn't mean that I don't want to be asked questions. I cannot remember one time that I have ever told someone, no, I will not answer that, in public, in private, either from my fellow board members, from residents, from administrators. It is simply because I don't feel it will accomplish anything in the process. Again, if we listen to each other, if we spend the time truly listening to each other during these meetings, committee meetings, closed sessions, we are brutally honest, and every one of us up here has a professional integrity, and every one of us up here is passionate, and every one of us asks tough questions, because that's all our jobs. I'm not saying I won't vote for this because I won't answer your question. I'm saying, I just don't think it's a necessary part of the process. Just wanted to clarify that.
I think we need to move on, because I think the president isn't feeling well, so out of honor and respect for what's going on right now, like you're having a lot of fun.
Sure.
So let's, because I did see it, so let's figure out how we're, you know, end this.
Call for, call for the vote.
Thank you.
Probably, it doesn't have to be, but I think we do a roll call.
Okay. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
No.
Mr. Carangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
No.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Ms. Gwass?
No.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lacks?
No.
Motion fails.
Is there anything else this evening? May I please have a motion? We do, oh, I'm sorry. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session. The Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, both items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for the aforementioned subject. May I please have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Carangelo, seconded by Mrs. Becker. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.[1792.11]